Stop laughing first.
Hey Jim.
Hey Jim. So, I would like to call the planning board meeting of Monday, March the fourteenth at 2022 at 7:02 PM. The first item on the agenda is the approval of February fourteen minutes. Does anyone on the board have any amendments that haven't, they haven't already made with Mike? And if not, I would entertain a motion, I believe everyone was with us that night.
I'm a little weeper of the minutes.
Mike Baker.
A second.
Monica, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Got it? Ananamous is approved. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make us aware of something they would like to tell us about, um, that's not on the agenda? Okay. Not seeing that anyone is, would like to step forward, I would entertain a motion to close the public commentary.
I move that we close the public comment period.
Mike Baker.
A second.
Monica again, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And it has passed. Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is to continue our discussion and recommendation to the Board of Trustees of the proposed local zoning change, this being the intent to change, to amend the Village of Lansing zoning law and zoning map, so as to rezone a medium density residential district containing tax parcel forty-six point one dash six dash six point three, forty-six point one dash six dash six point twenty-two, and forty-six point one dash six dash six point one-one. And the proposal is to change it to a high density residential district. Borders Uptown Road, and, and I think we have been through this before, so I won't state all the rest of this. The rezoning of this MDR district is intended to allow for a favorable transition to a contiguous HDR district west of Uptown. And it is intended to be consistent with the village comprehensive plan. So we have Jeremy with us again tonight, and we all received some information. Jeremy, would you lead us off with just kind of fillings in on this report that you sent to us?
Yeah, so, um, let me see, let me share my screen here really quick. Let me get you back on my screen. Alright, can everybody see that okay?
I can.
Okay. Okay. Um, so, let me just get started here. I did send this before I added one slide because I was able to find some additional data, but I'll get to that at the end. So, real quick introduction, again, this is the parcel in question that, that we're talking about this evening, the twenty-five point four acre parcel. I will note again, just for the record, that the, I think the zoning question in front of you includes these two parcels, the park and the swim club parcel, in addition to the twenty-five acres that I've outlined here, that is actually owned by Cornell University. Last month, you asked me to cut, you asked me basically three questions and to come back with three sets of information. One was research on the context for the rezoning that was done in nineteen eighty-eight, apparently from HDR to MDR. I was unable, you know, we had several people here at the university, we had the council's office look, we looked into records. You know, we keep records around, obviously deeds and ownership and other things as well, but could not find anything on the context here for the rezoning that, that occurred in nineteen ninety-eight. So unfortunately, we, um, kept being incredibly helpful there, and I actually don't even remember if that was nineteen eighty-eight or nineteen ninety-eight. I think it was nineteen eighty-eight, actually, but.
Oh, it doesn't, it doesn't matter because I, I know I had the same experience, frankly.
Okay.
I mean, I, I could find our minutes, but they didn't, they gave no reason.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a bit of a black box. But I think really what's most relevant, at least in my view here, and, and sort of in the case that I'll make, is, is really your current comprehensive plan. Things were a lot different back then. And the environment was a lot different back then. So, um, I'll move forward. I, the other thing was that you asked me for was my reference, sort of the relevant sections that I found in your comprehensive plan relative to this, to this zoning. So I'll go right into that first, and then I've done a bit of market analysis around vacancy and the housing market and, and whether the demand for housing in this region would support a high density residential development. Again, this is just a real quick, it's currently zone medium density residential. And that's a compare, this, this slide here, just for background, that compares what's allowable in each. And I'll, I'll, I will note that multifamily is only allowable by special permit. So, um, if a multi, we'll talk a bit about multifamily tonight. If a multifamily development did come forward for the site, obviously you would have the opportunity to review and approve it under the special permit process. So, real quick, this is the, I've shown this a bunch of times, the zoning context of our site and what it's surrounded by. A couple of things, real quick, before I get into the comprehensive plan, first is that, you know, the comprehensive plan doesn't, and I'm assuming everybody, I think, went and back and looked at it since the last meeting. You know, you don't find that it compels rezoning to HR. There's nothing in the, the comprehensive plan that says Uptown Road, everything there has to be high density residential. It's just sort of, that's not how the plan is organized. It's not how it's written. That's sort of not its purpose, to be honest. But I, but I think there's a very strong case to be made that it is supportive of this site being zoned as high density residential. I think the most compelling argument really is the geographic context. If you look at what's surrounding the site, if you look at the zoning around the site from, from commercial high traffic down to high density residential on both sides, and the Health and Human Services District, a medium density, you know, single lot, single family home development here that you could do under, or duplex under medium density residence would almost feel out of place. In my view, I think that high density residential site would not be out of place, and it is consistent with the surrounding area. And I did that, and we'll talk about this a little bit, the supporting infrastructure that's in place from sewer lines to sidewalks and streetlights to TCAT stops, all of that stuff is in place, the things that would support on the infrastructure side, the development of a higher density residential project here. The one thing I do want to note, one of the things I'll try and, and discuss, is that I do believe HDR is the most likely zoning to enable a development that'll meet the goals that's outlined in the, that are outlined in the plan. I do believe it'll be next to impossible to find somebody that would be willing to invest in single family lot kind of development on the site, that cost is just way too high. And, 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 you know, you'll see in several places in the plan, it does call, it does call out and encourage the development of a broad range of housing options. And that's the kind of thing you could do with a multifamily development that would be enabled by high density residential. So, real quick, before we go into the comprehensive plan, just my investment analysis, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that, that position, that, that we feel that high density residential is sort of the only feasible investment that we could find here. I think it's highly unlikely in this market, the lower density development, or even medium density residential really does incentivize larger units and homes in a mono type design. You're not likely to get that diversity of approach from a range of sizes of units from, you know, maybe a thousand to three thousand square foot, multiple bedrooms, single bedrooms. It's really, really hard to do that on a lower density kind of development. With a lower density development, rents and sale prices would be incredibly high. I'll note this later, but the cost of construction for a single family home or duplex on single lots in, in in this region is three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot right now, and that's based on real project costs that we've seen in the market, and I went around and I talked to some people. Just for context, for a two thousand square foot home, that's six to seven hundred thousand dollars just to build it. Then you gotta sell it, and you gotta make money off of it. So, that's a really high price, and it's really hard to achieve a level of affordability or workforce housing with that kind of cost of construction. That's all in project cost, including the, the cost of land. So, my position is, and I believe there's pretty strong support for this, under the current zoning, it's just unlikely to develop this land as well. And like I said, I think it's, HDR is, is, is consistent with a comprehensive plan and also the most likely path, actually having it developed to meet some of the the needs that are expressed in goals that are expressed in the plan. And, so a couple of things that are called out in the demographic section of your, of your plan, I tried to sort of do this side by side in the most effective way, but it references aging of the population, and I think we see that in the census data as well. And accommodating the needs of seniors who may want to downsize, who maybe don't need to be in managed living circumstances, but just don't want that larger house anymore. You know, that, that, that is a concern and something that, that's called out in the plan. Obviously, the shortage of, of available affordable housing is called out throughout the plan. And, and as I've stated, HDR is going to support a development that will be able to support that diverse population. It calls out affordable, like I said, affordable housing, that, that lack of affordable housing really is a function of low supply and high demand that we see in this market. We're seeing considerable increases in the cost of for sale housing and considerable increases in, in rents within the larger Ithaca NSA. It also mentions maintaining a mutually supportive relationship with the business and technology park and encouraging a development in the HHS district. If you've read the news right now, they're talking about the great resignation and how difficult it is to attract employees to employers all over the country, and that's really true. We're seeing that at Cornell. It's very difficult to attract people to move up, up here. And I'm, I'm guessing that a lot of other employers see that as well. And we have seen people turn down pretty well paying jobs because of the inability to find housing or, or the lack of affordability for housing, even for people that are sort of at a, at a, at a pretty good salary level. So, in a tight labor market, people do look to the housing context and where they can live. And I've long believed that additional housing close to the Business and Technology Park, where we do have some parcels available for development, would help, would help us attract businesses to that park and maybe encourage additional development there as well. I mentioned the escalating construction costs here, as I goes to housing affordability. And I thought it was worth noting here that Uptown Road is acknowledged and as being characterized by high density residential within your plan, here on page ten. And the planning for growth, I thought, was really interesting. So, I won't go into all the language here, obviously you've been able to read it, but it really talks about that supporting infrastructure and, and driving development to areas that have the, the infrastructure to support it. And I think this site is sort of a case in point of that, that kind of infrastructure that's needed. You've just put in a sidewalk along all of it, there's pedestrian and street level lighting. You have the ability to create the kind of street grid internally. That would encourage bicycling and walking and other things, as pedestrian oriented kind of development. And the TCAT stop right nearby, and a park right nearby, and actually a commercial district that you could walk to or bike to easily. And then there's a, also a large section here that talks about housing availability and, and affordability. So this is where the plan does call for a broad range of high quality, safe and attractive housing options for a diverse population. And I think that if we want to do that here, the high density residential development will, will, will allow that to happen. And then I did want to sort of, I, I found this language inside the actual village code itself. It's not the, it's not the comprehensive plan. But again, this is sort of that, that, that context where high density residential is an appropriate use, and really it's only appropriate in an area like this, where it has the infrastructure to support that higher density kind of development. Before I get into demographics, I don't, do you want me to stop there, Lisa?
Does anybody have any questions, or would, would you like Jeremy to keep going?
Can I make one comment, Lisa?
Yes.
Just as, as I look through the comprehensive plan and code and things like that since our last meeting, in, in what, and I, I'll talk about this later more when I comment on stuff, but I just think it's important for board members to keep in mind some of the things that I saw and some of the things that Jeremy brought up, right, are, some of the things in the comprehensive plan are specific to parcels. And some of the things in the comprehensive plan are specific to projects. Right? We're not talking about a project here as we determine what to do zoning wise. We're talking about the parcel. So, you know, I, I think is, like I said, I'll get into specifics later, but if you look at that specific, you know, parcel, whether it was MDR or HDR, TCAT already goes by, sewer already goes by, the sidewalks already there, like Jeremy mentioned. So some of those things aren't impacted by the MDR to HDR. I think that's just something for, for the board members to, to keep in mind. Project specific versus parcel specific.
Right. Okay, I think, keep going, Jeremy, thanks.
Okay. So, um, I, I, I went to a couple of different sources on the demographics here, because when you brought up that twelve percent figure, Lisa, I was, I was a little bit shocked. I was, that just does not comport with my, my, my reality and sort of what I experience on a day to day basis.
I think I took it from exactly this line, and did I not divide properly? I don't know.
No, 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 you did. You did exactly right. So you'll see, this is, this, this, this chart, if you read it and you do the math, that should imply a twelve percent vacancy. And, and so, you know, I had to sort of figure this out, right? So, a couple of, of, of quick notes on that. First, it's a little misleading because it, it captures vacancy very broadly. So if there's an inhabitable, inhabitable unit, something that doesn't meet code and is therefore vacant, it's not serving the market, but it is captured in these numbers. So it, it does tend to be a, a bit inflated. Or if you had a large multifamily development that maybe is counted, but isn't open yet, that could skew the numbers. The other, the other aspect is that the twenty twenty census, I've, I've actually heard like two reports on NPR today about how difficult that one has been. There have been a couple of political reasons about why the twenty twenty census is not necessarily seen as accurate compared to recent years, and COVID really skewed it. Especially in a place like Tompkins County, where a lot of the students weren't here, and they kind of skewed population data. And, and to be honest, the census data on the ten year basis isn't the best or most accurate way to look at vacancy. And that's actually caught out on the next page of the very same report. This is the Tompkins County twenty twenty housing snapshot. So the county has all these housing goals. They did a snapshot saying how we achieve these goals and really did a kind of a dive in on, on some of these numbers, but specifically on vacancy. The county tends to look at the ACI standard, that's the American Community Survey, and that's what the census does on an annual basis. It's not as comprehensive, they don't get every single household through surveys and knocking on doors and all of that. But it tends to capture a more accurate picture of things like vacancy. And when they look at the ACAS data on a year by year basis, and I highlighted the sections in the report, the real trend is that in twenty nineteen, big rental vacancy was at four percent. Slightly down from four point four percent in, in twenty ten. And then they go on to suggest that the housing shortage for both renters and homeowners shows low vacancy rates. So, by the county's own assessment, or their read of more nuanced data, in addition to that chart that was on the previous page, they suggest vacancy is actually at, at four percent, which in reality is very low and indicative of a shortage of supply. I also pulled numbers on the multifamily market, and I'll get to that a little bit, the vacancy is even lower. You know, one impact of the undersupply is high rental and sale prices and cost burden. I kind of highlighted this, where it calls out cost burden, the chart here on the right, within the Village of Lansing. And this is an analysis of income versus rental costs. So, you know, the typical formula is that your, your income should not exceed thirty percent of your cost of housing. And Village of Lansing is quite high on the renter side. It showed that fifty point four percent of renters were cost burdened, and twenty-five percent are severely cost burdened. I don't know what the threshold is for that. And on homeowner, homeowners tend to do a little better for this countywide and nationwide as well. About half of that percentage are, are cost burdened. The other interesting trend here is that, that we've seen, you've also seen this nationwide, is that, yes, so population in the county has gone up. But the, I think it was around four percent, the number of households increased double that, is eight point five percent increase in number of households. And what we're seeing is that households are getting smaller. So when you analyze the number of people in a household, that number's going down. Some of that is, are things like divorce. So, you know, what was one household becomes two. Some of it is, is younger people sort of maybe sticking around, staying, or keeping their household size smaller for a longer period of time, people getting married, maybe buying homes later. There's a trend we're seeing, but that increase of numbers, the number of households, you just, you have to catch up to that, right? So if your households are going up by this much, and, and you already have an undersupply in the market, you need to deliver even more households to catch up with that increase as well. Or housing units, I'm sorry. And then you're seeing these, these effects inside the rental market conditions. So on the right here, you're seeing median rent, change in median rent over the last ten years. This is also from the Tompkins County report. There, there was an eighteen percent increase since twenty ten. And it's even higher now. This, this, this only captures to twenty twenty, so you don't actually have some of these COVID impacts that we've seen, and the housing market's done quite crazy over the last one or two years. We've seen actually more significant increases since then. I can actually show you some of that. And then just anecdotally, you know, I work with people finding housing all the time. People that are recruited to Cornell tend to pick up the phone, call me, and ask me about housing here. We work with students a good deal. We manage our own sort of portfolio of rental housing. And anytime I've had to find a student housing past May, it's very, very difficult to find them anything. Things tend to be leased up, and newer properties are actually leased up with waiting lists for, for, for students as well. So, just the sense of things out there is that things are very, very tight, and it's difficult for people to find housing. And then I, I pulled a report, this is CoStar, CoStar does a lot of anal, analysis, and we have a subscription to this. So I looked at the multifamily submarket for the broader Ithaca metropolitan statistical area, and that includes the Village of Lansing. And, and the current vacancy within multifamily is actually two percent, which is incredibly low. It does go up and down as new product is delivered and absorbed. But even with the number of planned units that are under construction right now, you think of some of the ones that are downtown that are under construction, they'll deliver in the next year or two. Vacancy jumps, but then it, it very quickly gets back down, it's predicted to level out at, at most three percent over the next five or six years. And over the last year, within this submarket, they've seen an escalation of twelve percent in rents, which is really big. That actually can hit people quite hard on that monthly budget as well. So, that was the data, data I was able to pull together, and hopefully that, that provides some helpful context for you.
Well, yeah.
Keep sharing, or do you want me to pull this down?
Yeah, I guess do, so that we can, I'd like to be able to see everyone.
Sure. Back up, let me know.
Okay. So, essentially, you know, as, as, as Mike said, when you start looking at the comprehensive plan, it's about a project. So much of it is about projects. And however, there were some indications in there that, you know, there are no other HDR parcels left. We know that this was once HDR, and when you look at the map, it does seem as MDR out of sorts. I'm assuming that it, at some point, someone felt that MDR was going to make the, the land more saleable, although that's not what was in the minutes. Nothing was there. And now from some of the stuff you have said, that to put to, if I understood, is if it's MDR, the possibilities of developing that would be very expensive housing would be the result because of the lack of density. So we're really talking about density here, I think, aren't we? And the, and the capability of increasing the density for this plot. But, one of the things I, well, I would, before I get into the uses, because I did develop a grid, trying to compare MDR to HDR, because this is not about a project. The fact is, we know that you have someone that's interested in this parcel. But until that actually is sold, you know, we cannot assume that that's going to happen. So we must not make any projections. But I, I might ask you in a bit, Jeremy, to give me an example of some of the projects that you could, you feel could go on to this property. But until then, it's like, yeah, it, it's about the use of this land. It's not about a project. It's about the differences between MDR and HDR, and whether we feel the uses are appropriate in this area. I think we've gone through the spot zoning, but I want to ask in the board members, does anybody feel as though they don't, they do, they feel this is spot zoning? Because all the case law says, and I sent you some stuff right after our last meeting, that this really doesn't seem to fit with that. Is there anybody that feels uncomfortable about that? Good, because I, I think it, you know, I think we got, we should, I should have brought that up at the last meeting, but you know, it's when something is out of character, and this truly is not an out of character situation. So, but before we get to the uses, Jeremy, I have a question that's been something I just would like to pick your brain about. I had pulled back, I guess, when this first came up, a tax bill. And I don't understand how the taxes for Cornell property works. I had always was under the impression, and people I think are under the impression generally, that Cornell does not pay taxes because they're an educational institution. Now, in this case, it's a vacant property. I have an assessed value that's pretty low because it's vacant, I guess. And so the taxes are not very high, they're less than a thousand dollars a year, or we're in twenty twenty, for the village. I'm talking just for the village taxes.
I say, I thought they were higher than that, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is at a rate of a one fifty per thousand. So, it's like eight hundred and fifty bucks rounded. And how does that work? So, even, even though Cornell is an educational institution and considered a not-for-profit, or is it because it's held by real estate department?
So it's, this is actually a pretty common misperception, so.
I know, I would like, that's what I want by, I thought I would take this advantage.
Yeah, yeah, so, Cornell is a tax exempt five oh one C three organization. So, property that we hold that's specifically being used to further the mission as a nonprofit is tax exempt. Property that we hold for other purposes, or that isn't directly related to that, is subject to real estate taxes. And in fact, Cornell University is the third highest property taxpayer in the county for that reason. So, most of the properties that I manage under real estate, in fact, almost all of them are, are actually taxable, and we're paying real estate taxes on them. That includes all of the Business and Technology Park. That includes any vacant land that we have that's adjacent to the Business and Technology Park, where, where, where paying all the taxes, stormwater bills, anything associated with it. We're, we're paying for.
Okay, that's just good to know. So, I think, um, I wanted to go with, with the board down the chart, and I don't know, maybe Mike, Scott, you could put up that chart that I did that has the checkmarks where, where MDR differs from HDR in the uses, because
Was that the one, Lisa?
Yep, that's the one. What we really need to, to, to be considering is, we have this request. We see what we can do in H, in MDR, which is what it is at the moment. And does it make sense, and is it appropriate to go to HDR? And I, I actually, when I was doing this, I found it interesting, but I'm wondering, I want to hear from board members where they feel HDR might not be appropriate. Well, let's start with group residential. Anybody have any thoughts on group residential? Do you think that that would be?
I don't, I don't think it's out of character with the other, other things that are offered in the village. I'll say that.
Well, the thing is, it's, yeah.
And I, I realize.
It's not allowed, it's not currently, it's not currently allowed.
Yep, but I, I don't think that it would be out of character here, if there was a change in zoning.
Okay. And when I got to, does anybody else feel, have a strong feelings about that one? When it came to indoor recreation club, I thought, well, we've got an outdoor recreation club. What if they wanted to enclose their pool? Would it become an indoor recreation club? And I thought, I don't see a problem personally with that one either. Government buildings. Well, I, some of these seems unlikely, but is a government building something that would be out of character? Considering that it's kind of close to. Considering that it's kind of close to HHS. I'm not sure how different a government building might be. Museums, public buildings, sort of the same thing. Now, last time somehow undertaking got thrown under the bus, which I really don't know. Who first brought that one up, but I personally, having had relatives that own funeral homes, don't consider that a problem.
It's well, I I think, well, it might not be the most desirable thing there, or maybe anywhere in the village. There's other places that are zoned like this in the village where that could happen and.
Yeah, I I think, you know, again, we're remember that all of these things are permitted with special permit. And I think that's one of the. Most crucial parts that we have to keep in mind here. Is that even if some of these were to come forward under an HDR. We have. A fair amount of control. And that is where I realized as we're going through the comprehensive plan. How this related to our BoMax experience. When we upzone that. All of the things that we went through were concordant with our comp plan. And I think when people come. For any one of these things, as I looked at them under HDR, they would have to come for a special permit. And so. That is when, if it is not in agreement with you, your comprehensive plan. We have way more control and influence than I think we realize at times. And. When we were challenged with that by, you know, with a chapter 78. Or article 78. We prevailed because it was in keeping with our comprehensive plan. And so I think. That's something we really have to remember is that the special permit. These things that are permitted with special permit, and these are the major differences between the two. We really have a lot more to say. Then then we realize. Do you disagree with that, Mike Scott?
I can care. I do not disagree with you at all. And. I just have to emphasize that the the planning board at times. I I feel that you don't understand that not understand is the wrong word. I feel that you don't realize the actual. Power that you have and and I. You 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 just. You have in this, in this case, you basically have. Two different shots at this. It's it's zoning and then you also have a shot to special permit. So. I I completely agree with you, Lisa. I know I just rambled around and made a big circle and I just want to put a note for you in there, Jeremy, that. No matter the outcome of what happens here, it's not for a lack of effort of your your part. That's for sure. That's presentation was excellent.
I know I was gonna, I you don't want to, you hate to be too complimentary. But it was a very nice effort. I think it was. It was really nice. I agree with Mike. So moving along then, looking at all of these where there's a black dot, this these would be where we would be considering clinic. Well, there's clinics next door. Some of these are unlikely to occur, but they could occur. So you always have to go to the worst side. The one thing, the multi-unit residential building. In sewer areas. The main objection I have, which is how I got to the whole, wait a minute, we've got the special permit, is I was thinking of. Some of the situations that have been proposed to us in the past, the bunkers that we saw with Lansing Meadows, the Keeyuga View, high-rise. Unexciting buildings. I think that is something we're not interested in seeing here and it would, but I believe that it would be out of character. Personally, and that we would have. A lot of, it wouldn't be some of the things that are in the comprehensive plan. And that's what I was looking at. When I went through the comprehensive plan, where would this would a not a multi-unit residential would be if that would be okay. But the style of it might not be suitable and that I do believe we have some ability to stop that from happening with the special permit. And then the one thing for me that was, well, I also thought, gee, commercial crop and animal is allowed. And I was thinking of some of the things that could go there. And I think, how about a kennel full of beagles? That would be really interesting. You know, and and noisy and and whatnot. I think that's a very unusual thing to be allowed in MDR. But I think it would be totally out of character in that neighborhood. But I really like the idea of mixed use. I think if something were to come in here that involved mixed use, I would also support that. And that is not allowed in MDR. But I want to hear. From my other board members. Given some of the conversation we had last time. About concerns because I know people have concerns. So. I would like to hear them at this point. Monica, maybe you have some comments about vacancy rates, given your. Experience.
My experience is only limited to my experience. So it's not countywide. So I don't think I'm. I'm apt to talk about a countywide vacancy rate, especially in Village of Lansing, because I own a property here. Maybe more the city of Ithaca, but not here. I own one property here. That's it. But I live in. But yeah, no, I mean, this piece, this parcel is kind of like a chameleon. It could really be anything. It could be business and psychology, health and human services, high-density residential. Could stay as medium density residential, right? I mean, it's kind of in the middle of all of these different parcels. And none of these. Zonings would be out of character. Like it wouldn't, you know, it could be, it could be any of them quite easily. And kind of blend in with the rest of the neighborhood. So I'm just kind of weighing the pros and cons of, you know, what's best for the village is changing it, going to be in the best interest of the village. Does it really matter at this point? We have so much control over, you know, projects coming down the pipeline. You know. I'm I said, I just kind of would like to hear what other people have to say in terms of that, because, you know, I'm I'm open to to upzoning it. I think it's appropriate to upzone it. But it could also be health and human services, right? So if Jeremy was part of. Let's say one of the doctor's offices there and they wanted health and human services and he was arguing for that. That would also, in my mind, be perfectly reasonable as well. So it's just kind of like, what are we zoning it as? For what benefit are we getting from the village? It's sort of what I'm weighing in my mind as I hear other people comment on it. So.
Well, I guess we should have added a column of health and human services. I never thought of that, but. I don't believe in health and human services. You can put housing, can you? No. So to me, that would be, I I don't think we have the same need for health and human services actually. As we do for housing. I think it's pretty identified. That housing has continued to be an issue, specifically workforce housing. And so I I don't know, but.
Can I comment, Lisa, next? I have a whole slew of things.
Yeah, Mike, would you take, would you take down, Mike Scott, would you take down with the chart so I can see mine? Okay, thanks.
So so some of this is fully formed thoughts. Some of it's more of a conscious, I think, stream of thoughts, just to kind of further the discussion like Monica said, so. You know, there was there was that first discussion about spot zoning, which I know that we got some notes earlier about, you know, court cases. And if you look into what spot zoning and what's not. You know, whether it's, you know, whether if we change this, if it is it comprehensive with the, or is it consistent with comprehensive plan? I've looked through it. I've talked to, you know, Lisa about it. Others have talked about it. I think it is, or you know, it could be. I don't. I don't think it's. I don't think it's blatantly not. Is it compatible with surrounding uses? Yeah. Is it going to harm surrounding properties? I don't think so. Are there? And this this was one for me. I thought this was interesting. The availability and suitability of other parcels. I don't. I don't think I'm. This might be the last one, Mike. Are there any other kind of available? Are there any other available HD? Lots in in the village or not?
I think the comp plan actually says that there are none.
Okay.
I I'll look. I'll look right now, Mike, but I don't.
But either way, I think that's an important thing, right? You know, the availability. And then, you know, recommendations of, you know. You know, the professional staff and the planning board and things like that. So I I think those are all. Things to to kind of. Take into account, you know, I mentioned earlier that the comp, you know, as we talk about this, we talk about the complaint, we're talking about this zone. We're not talking about a specific project. So I think that's that's important to keep in mind. You know, some, some of the things that Jeremy brought up, you know, were about demographics and things like that, you know, if if we talk about. Senior housing or low-income housing, us changing the zoning doesn't necessarily impact. Senior housing or low-income housing, things like that. A specific project might. But us rezoning it doesn't necessarily. So I think those are important things. And I already mentioned, you know, if you change, if you change zoning, it doesn't necessarily, it could, but it doesn't necessarily impact things like, you know, TCAT, sewer utilities, things like that. I think on the flip side of that, and I'm going to reference, and I know I've gotten a couple of emails. I've talked to a couple of people about this. I know that there are certain emails that we all got. From people in the village. And I think there's there, you know, there were some concerns, some questions in there. And I think that there. There are kind of some important things to to bring out in there. And one of them was kind of talking about the history of that lot, right? We're not here talking about the history of the lot. We're talking about what to do with it now. What does our comp plan say now? Not what is our, if we had a comp plan 20 years ago, what did it say then? We're talking about now. So I almost discount the history of it entirely. What's best for the village now? Not is not what's best for it 20 years ago. So I, you know, I I think there's that piece of it. There is kind of the discussion about, you know, parcels on the other side of the road. And I know, Monica, you live in a, you live in that parcel on the other side of the road. And what's that? What that zone does? We're not talking about that. We're talking about this parcel. I think 13 creates a kind of unique buffer between those areas. What's right on one side of 13 might not be what's right on this side of 13. As a matter of fact. It's entirely different, you know, residential versus health and human services, you know, kind of adjacent things over there. You know, there were some comments in there about, you know, we're talking about the proposed tree law and things like that. One way or another, at some point, and it's it's the nature of things and it's no different than, you know, the village park that we created. It's a lot of green space right now. It's not always going to be. It's just not going to be. I would love to see it stay green space. I love green space. I would have liked to see the last place that was green space, stayed green space. It's not going to be, right? It's going to get developed. And we're trying to adjust accordingly in the village to, you know, offset those things, you know, in a sustainable manner, things like that. And I think that's great, but. It's going to be developed at some point. And I think one of the things is. You know, there's there's interest in it now, one way or another, whether it stays MDR, goes HDR, there's interest in that. I know that we, this was a comment, we talked about the PDA last time, and that was brought up in the email that some of us got. We're, you know, we weren't talking about a. Specific thing. We're talking about options in the village. Here's what village law allows. Village law allows for. Somebody to request a PDA. Village law allows somebody for to request rezoning. And I think, you know, those are all things and it was just simply brought up as a. You know, brought up as an option. And then. Obviously, the, you know, there there was a point in there about, and I've already mentioned this a few times, project specific versus. Site specific. And I think that's something that's really important for us to all kind of. Keep in mind, but. Yeah, I just kind of wanted to throw some of those out there. Some of them are specific. Some of them are more of a conscious stream of thoughts to keep the conversation going.
Am I just answering your question? All HDR zones, they are filled with large projects.
Yeah. So I think, right. So I think if you looked at, look back at that question that we had gotten. The availability and suitability of other parcels. There is no other HDR parcels available. And I, you know, I I don't think, right. So we we could say, yes, we want to make this HDR. We could go through that process. And somebody could come up next time and say, oh, well, there's no HDR available. Make this one HDR. But that's not the point, right? The point of it is the availability and suitability of HDR lots. I I, you know, there there was conversation last time and, you know, I was kind of on the fence one way or the other last time. Maybe still am, but you know, there there was that discussion last time about whether it's suitable or not. Right? If somebody proposed the, you know, the lot next to the village, you know, the village town hall to say, oh, well, there's no more HDR available. I want to make this one HDR. Okay, you're right. There's no more available. But it's not suitable. For HDR because of the other parcels that surround. So. I'll give somebody else a chance to talk. Come on, I'll I'll step down off my soapbox for a second.
Jim?
Well. Mike gave a very comprehensive presentation. And Monica.
I was feverishly taking notes as Jeremy was talking. That's why I kept looking down my.
A pretty thorough presentation as well and made a lot of good points. So I don't. Really have much to add. I was initially. Somewhat reluctant to. You know, not saying the need to upzone it to HDR, but having reviewed the materials. Prior to the meeting and so forth, I don't really see it's that it would be objectionable. And I think the comments have been made. It's. It does fit into the surrounding. Surrounding categories. And the only thing, and I think this was a point you made, Lisa, that I really wouldn't want to see as a, you know, four-story apartment building or something like that, that. Kind of blocks the sky and blocks the view or something like that thing you referred to. I think it's on Cinema Drive. Near the old Sheraton Hotel or near the Credit Union. But. Yeah, I I don't really see a problem. I I don't have a problem with this. I mean, initially, I thought, geez, it'd be nice to keep it undeveloped as. Walking trail for woods, but. The woods with nice walking trails, but that. Seems to be a utopian view. And realistically, I don't. I don't have a problem with. Looking at the HDR. Category.
It's funny, Jim. I had I had that same question. I was like, well, you know, there's a lot of things that I don't want to see. And that goes, there really are, right? And I think that I think that's very true. There's a lot of things that as a planning work, we don't want to see and we do want to see. And I think we've been talking about them for years as the various projects come up. And but that goes back to the, you write that comment that I made at the beginning, right? We're talking about a site, not a project. We have different levels of control and projects come along. And I think that's evident. And, you know, maybe we've not always done the best, but there are certain things that. You know, people have proposed and we're like, oh, just no, that that does not fit in the village here. I'm sorry. And, you know, hope, you know, so. We talk about the site and then, you know, when a project comes up and they apply for a special permit. You know, we we have different levels of control over it.
Yeah, one of them obviously got through because it's standing there. That we all look at. That by story out of us. But yeah, I mean, garden-style apartments would be. Nice use for that because there are. Two, two garden, two complexes nearby that are essentially garden-style apartments. Uptown Village and Gaslight. And the other one, I can't remember the name of it. But yeah, I so I don't. I don't get register any strong objections or even medium objections.
So does anybody else have anything they want to bring up at this point? We know that there's the infrastructure to support this, provided we have enough. I don't know where we'd stand with sewer, but these are all things that come out. If there is a specific project. Now, Jeremy, I think when you first gave us the presentation, you were talking about. Some of the things that, I mean, you know, obviously from our, some of our discussion, the kinds of things we're interested in. And you. You've probably had various people approach you to buy this property. And you had mentioned a buyer and we had seen some sort of. Possibilities, you know, and I was wondering if you, you know, as an example. Some of the things that you. Mentioned in, I think, the very first presentation that you were trying to bring. To this site, a buyer that was probably interested in. Something, just some examples of some of the projects that you have seen that might be appropriate in an HDR setting.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jim kind of hit on it, the the sort of garden style, not really tall. And I think, Mike, I'll have to check, but I believe that there are, even with the special permit, if you do multifamily here, there are height limitations. And I don't remember if they're 38 feet or not, but there there are actually, there is actually.
35, yeah.
35.
The idea of a a high-rise here would be, I don't, I don't even know if that would be allowed. Or even in Ithaca, high-rise, which is much lower than a high-rise in most other places. But so we. In this process, it's not in our interest to select a buyer that isn't going to succeed. And so we looked very, very carefully. We were very discriminating. In terms of. Who were we even willing to entertain an offer from with these facts in mind? So, you know, I think actually East Point or the BoMax Drive development is actually quite in line with the kind of. Successful development that I think you could do here. It's multifamily, but it isn't one huge big building. And and, you know, you can, you can create buildings that are actually. Have the form of. Lower density, but still sort of managed to put multiple units within it of varying sizes. So those are the kinds of things that we looked at. But I think if you look at the neighbors. And, you know, I would say something that's a little more. um, and, uh, you know, I would say something that's a little more modern and higher quality than, than, than what exists now. Uh, but maybe not too far out of style with that sort of garden style approach, is, is what we were thinking of. And actually, it being a real community, so, the kind of place that does have streets and sidewalks and encourages walking, at least within it. Um, and, and that kind of circulation and, um, you know, successful, you know, kind of well-planned place. The, the, the nice thing about the size of this parcel is that it does allow you, to, to, to plan it in a very sort of nice neighborhood kind of way. Um, so that's really, that is really what we had in mind. Um, I do want to mention, it's not, it's not right here, and I do sort of recognize the, the sort of perspective on open space. Um, you know, Sapsucker Woods is close by, it's not, like I said, it's not, it, it, it's not right here, but it is close by. And we did recently acquire an, an additional hundred acres for Sapsucker Woods that will be open to the public, so, that is expanding, and that's kind of a treasure, so, you know, as you know, it's a very special place, so, um, we're actually adding to the number of unique, kind of isolated, quiet walking trails that are in the area, so, um, whether or not this goes forward, that will be, that will be growing, um, our presence there at Sapsucker Woods. And, I don't know if I had any other points, but yeah, so hopefully that gives you some character, I think, around, the, the, the kind of development that I think is certainly possible here. Um, and that I think will, will be actually quite successful, if it's still.
Okay. Um, well, so our goal obviously is, is, you know, we are charged with making a recommendation to the Board of Trustees as whether, we feel it is appropriate to upzone from MDR to HDR. So, um, I would like to take a vote on that. Which is what we've done in the past, just-
Just a vote?
Say what?
You need a motion or is it just a vote?
No, I, I, I need a motion to vote.
I move that, um, we recommend to the Board of Trustees that we upzone the lot from MDR to HDR.
Do I have a second?
All right, I'll second.
The enthusiasm. All the, all those in favor? I. Jim, I, Mike, it's unanimous. All right, I will be sending a note to the trustees that we have recommended, that it is appropriate to upzone parcels, and I will list all those parcels. Because I discovered also going through those minutes that people just would say, oh, the one bounded by so-and-so southerly for here, by this and this, parcel number, it's like a serial number, let's just do the parcel numbers. So before, so wait, let me just be sure that I understand. So it is all of the parcels that are listed, Mike Scott, in this, on the agenda item, right?
That is correct. It'll be the, the park, the Cornell own property,
And the-
And then swim club.
Okay, good. I just wanted to be sure that I've got that straight, because, these, these errors kind of go forward in perpetuity somehow. Okay, good. Um, I'll get that off tomorrow to the Board of Trustees, Jeremy. Um, Mayor Hardaway is on this call, so, or the Zoom meeting, so he will know, he knows about that at this point. And, we look forward to you, bringing us perhaps in the future, an interesting project for us to,
Well, we got to go to the board next, but thank you all for your time. I've been in front of you several times, and, um, you obviously care and have had a thoughtful consideration of this, and, um, good questions and everything, so, so thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for, um, bringing us a good presentation that made sense to us all, too. It was really good. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the review of the proposed tree conservation replacement law. My gosh, we have with us, its author, Simon. Are you there?
Yep. Hi, everyone. How you doing?
Good. Oh, my gosh, you've been working so hard, Simon. So where are we at?
Um, I don't know how we want to go through this. I got comments from, uh, all yourself and, and Ronnie and, and Natalie, and, um, I get comments here at home from certain planning board members, too. Um, so I don't know if you want to just go through all of those comments. I, I pretty much accepted everyone's grammatical, changes, I mean, they're pretty straightforward, but some of the comments, um, I think most of them are fairly straightforward, but, I can go through rather than, uh, I didn't write back to anyone regarding their comments.
So, I'm, I'm somewhat challenged by this Google thing, um. So I sent them, but I wasn't sure when, when I got that. Why don't you, I, I think I made mostly, like you said, mostly style or grammatical or something else. Um, but until you see the final thing, what are some of the conceptual things that changed from the last time that you think are really important to highlight?
Uh, the biggest changes that I made from, where you saw it last, uh, was rather than requiring that hundred diameter inches, uh, per acre, I changed that to thirty tree units per acre. And that was just after researching what a, a lot of other municipalities did. And again, this is pretty tricky, because I'm looking at cities and, and larger towns. I'm, I'm not, there's nothing for villagers. Villagers just look at, existing trees, and they have laws in place for, if you cut down this tree, you've got to make sure you replace it. Um, but not going into tree banks and, setting a number of trees that you have to have per acre. Um, so, but the cities in the town, the larger towns that do it, there's three different ways that they like to replace trees. The first one is, um, looking at the diameter breast height, um, and I found a few examples of that. They require, you know, a hundred to a hundred and twenty diameter inches per acre. Uh, a lot of cities look at canopy cover, that's what they're really concerned about. They want a canopy cover at the end of this whole project. They want to see usually forty-five percent canopy cover, somewhere, somewhere between thirty and forty-five percent canopy cover. Um, and then there's the others that choose to do it through tree units. Canopy cover, I find kind of tricky, because, the cities that do this are a large, New York City does it. Um, Asheville, North Carolina does it, um, San Diego, which is considered the tree city, they do it. Um, but they all have tree boards, they have people that can measure this. Um, they can, they can look at the canopy cover that's currently there. We don't have the means to do that, we don't have the staff to do that. Um, so the next best thing is really looking at, at tree units, and I like that, because it was kind of neat, and you can, place of value, on certain sized trees, so a tree of, twelve inches in diameter, we're gonna say that's worth two tree units. And that sort of incentivizes developers that come in from not cutting down all the existing trees, because every tree that they, have to plant, they're only getting a value of one for, but if they can keep some of these larger trees, like a twelve-inch diameter tree, they might get two units for, if they keep a thirty-six-inch diameter tree, they get three units for. So incentivizes them to keep, um, uh, existing trees. Uh, I did also put in a part, and Natalie commented on this, um, overstory versus understory trees, and deciduous versus, uh, evergreen trees. What I was really going for there, a, and I found this in, what other cities had done, and I, I based a lot off of what they were doing in Vancouver, because I, I started looking up wha- what are considered, you know, tree-friendly, cities, and Vancouver kept popping up, so I went to Vancouver to see what they were doing. Um, and, they, want twenty-five, at least twenty-five percent overstory, and at least twenty-five percent understory. And, I mean, you could do seventy-five, twenty-five, whatever your makeup is. Um, but they basically don't want people just coming in and planting a bunch of pencil pines, and, you know, getting their tree, units, their thirty tree units with planting pencil pines, because you won't end up with a lot of canopy cover. Um, so they want a mix of smaller trees and larger trees, so they do it via tree units, but that, the, the whole goal is to end up with a, a, a higher level of canopy cover. Um, so that was another change that I put in, um. That were really the main ones, just changing from the, the diameter breast heart requirement over to a tree, unit requirement.
The one thing I, um, kind of, I, I don't know why I was, it confused me, which is not hard to do. Um, when, it had to do with the street scape trees and the prime light tree, so that, parking lot trees can be counted as part of the required minimum tree density? Or is it tree units? What?
Uh, yeah, well, because density, I kept that word in from when I was doing diamond breast heart, um.
Is it-
I guess I can just change the wording. I just want to make sure, because I had that part about, street scape trees and parking lot trees, I just wanted to be clear that whatever you plant there counts towards, that thirty tree unit density.
Okay, well, we mentioned-
It's not an additional requirement on top of.
Yeah, that's what-
Versus tree buffering, which is, I, that's an addition, an, an additional requirement for those areas that need tree buffering, because that's a separate part of our code.
Right.
And I just didn't want, you know, if you needed a tree buffer, that you were able to make up your thirty tree units, just in the buffer alone, and then you don't need anything else.
Right, it felt, it, there was like one big plot. The one thing that I, you know, I, I keep, getting into, and I keep going back to this, um, older, I think I've sent it to you in the past, the thing from Nina Basak and stuff from, I don't know, they've probably updated it, but because it's about ten or more years old, about why perhaps explaining why we want varied species? Especially with, to, should be horticulturally appropriate and diverse. You know, we keep talking about diversity, but you know, we didn't say that on the street trees. And, you know, people always want it to look all nice and uniform, and yet, you know, then, we have that, uh, disease die-off issue, and I was like, maybe we need to put that diversity into that one as well, street trees.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, I can, um.
But I don't know whether we need to explain that to people, because people get, well, why should I do that, you know, kind of thing. I think it's always helpful if we explain, and I didn't know, how can we incorporate, like, resources for people to look at?
Yeah, I, because this is a hard thing, this is why I'm also going for just, we discussed at an earlier meeting, guidelines versus, um, set in stone rules, and I do come back to just providing guidelines, because ultimately, I think this should come to the planning board, and that's why I say that you need to present this, uh, the lan-, I've used a few different terms for landscape, you caught me out on this place, the landscape plan versus site plan versus tree planting plan. It's all the same thing, I, I have to change the wording there. Um, I've been using that as catchall for the same thing. Basically, what I envision is a developer comes in, and they show their site plan, and on that site plan, they have all of their landscaping. Um, a, and so they show the location of all the trees, they list or, uh, label all of the trees as to their species. Um, and on the plan, they'll be shown at full canopy, coverage at maximum growth. So you can see what it would, you know, when this is all leafed out, how, how would this look? Um, and so, I'm, I'm hoping that just by providing some, the guidelines in there, it'll all come down to the planning board, so, well, hey, you know, maybe you're planting your thirty trees here, but you have five percent coverage on, on your lot at maximum leaf out, that's, you know, not what we're going for, let's provide some more diversity there, or, all of your street scape trees are just the same thing, let's try to, you know, get some diversity there. I think it's very difficult to put everything set in stone, you must plant this way. Um, one, it would look kind of boring, everyone doing the same thing, but two, there's just so many things to look at. I, I don't think I have enough pieces of paper, um, will destroy the forests, right, and the tree conservation.
Yeah, I was just confused by, are we talking about a landscape plan, a tree planting plan, a replacement plan? And I just want to be sure that we don't have confusion for, because anybody who gets confused will use it to their advantage, I can tell you that.
Yep, uh, do you have a question, Mark?
Um, well, I'm just back to the, you know, I, you expressed concern about this. We went from, well, you went to these thirty tree units, um, like you were talking, and before you had, what, a hundred, uh, uh, diameter inches, is that what you had before?
Yep.
I'm just, a, and I think Tony had brought this up about, it's the whole visual thing of what some, an acre would look like with this. Um, you know, as I look down on your chart, on your tree chart, and I'll, I'll bring this up real quick. Um, a twenty-four inch tree is, is a good sized tree.
Yeah, that's a big.
With, the hundred diameter, inches, you would only have to have four trees on a, for these twenty-four, on an, an acre, correct? And now-
If I went that route, yep.
A, and now with the units, you technically, you would be required to have approximately seven. And seven of those trees on a, an acre, is a pretty good, and it would be a pretty good canopy. And I'm not saying you're wrong, by no means, I mean, you, the work you've done to this, I've, i- it's just, it's hard to visualize, you know what I mean? I, if I, if we could find a, an acre, take some pictures of, what some of the trees that are on it, and say, okay, this is, this is how many units are on this acre, and, and this, how many units are on this area, maybe I can do that, I mean, I, as soon as I-
Yeah, I know, you, you're right.
Stand out there, then I can get a picture of something and give people ideas, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you're right. It, it is really hard to visualize, and I get this question, e- everybody asks this question, how does this look? Can you show me how this would look? I can't answer the question, it's, it's so difficult. I've been driving around and looking at lots and seeing how many trees they have. I look at the, you know, I call out the, the Nissan dealership, the Magua. That's just devoid of trees, but they do have buffers, and that, so that's what I was trying to get away from, because they have, you know, just trees in a buffer, but you look at the front of that building, I think there's two trees out the front, and maybe six, seven shrubs. Um, but I did pull up a chart that shows, canopy coverage for the number and type of trees you place, uh, a, a plant, so I could share this chart with everyone at some point. Um, but basically, if you took, you know, sugar maples, let's say sugar maples have a width of, they, their full canopy will be fifty feet, and that's, I think they're actually a bit bigger than that, but let's say they have a full canopy of fifty feet. Um, you could plant, ten of those, according to this chart, on an acre, and you would get fifty percent coverage. You could take pencil pines, and you would have to plant two hundred and fifty-two pencil pines to get fifty percent, canopy coverage. So it's so hard to say, you know, this is how many trees you need to plant to get this much, coverage, how does this look? It just depends on what tree you're planting. You know, two hundred and fifty-two pencil pines versus, you know, ten sugar maples. It's, it's a big difference, so it's so hard to say, so.
About how all the canopy coverage talk then relates to the, solar law that's also been bantering about. If you have like fifty percent, coverage of a lot, how is that going to impact your ability to do solar?
That's what I was wondering, like, I'm thinking, well, shady or garden.
Yeah, well, because then, that's why I was also putting in understory versus overstory trees, because I wouldn't want someone to come in and, just plant, a bunch of huge oaks, um. I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, all of this is up, you, you know, a lot of these numbers that I put in here are, kind of arbitrary, and every municipality does it differently, what they give value to, and how they want the trees planted, um.
Yeah, I'm not saying that either is, you know, right or wrong, it's just, I had a little chuckle seeing the two laws go alongside of each other, like a tree law and a solar law, and they kind of, butt up against each other a little bit, maybe, but, certainly, I'm not as well-versed with the understory, overstory, you've done so much research into this, like, there's certainly more well-versed.
You know, I guess if a development comes along, you know, let's say another car dealership, and they want to put solar panels, on their roof, again, all of this, you know, I'm, I'm trying to keep the language in there that, um, I'm less approved by the planning board, so the planning board could always, say, well, hey, you want to do solar panels, we're gonna have to allow you to have, you know, your trees spaced a little differently, or put on one, more towards one side of the lot, or, or shorter trees, because you're putting in solar panels, so that you can catch the sun, um. so that you can catch the sun, um. Again, that's why I'm trying to get away from you know, you have to do X, Y, and Z, and this is how it has to be, but here's some general guidelines, and the planning board can use those guidelines as well, uh, if, if someone comes in and says, hey, can we, can we do it? The, here's our planting plan, or our landscape plan, or our site plan, whatever I've been calling it, um. And, and the planning board has some leeway.
Well, maybe for example, you know, towards the end, and I guess it only applied to the tree bank, as you say, further exemptions may be uh, approved by the planning board by submitting reasoning as to why the, the law would produce an unnecessary hardship. Perhaps we need some sort of language that would indicate, you know, if you could prove, I mean, one of the goals of this is is the carbon sequestration, I believe, and so if somebody wants to do solar, or, or environmental impact, solar if they can't do solar because there's too many trees, then that would be something to be considered, right? Is there some way we should be putting that language in there? Or some sort of way that there, they could appeal this if there were, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, um. So, you know, in, in lieu of yeah, actually, well at the end of the day, they can always, i- if they can't put in the trees, they put the money into the tree bank.
That's true, that's.
So, they don't have to put in, or, you know, they can say, well, we wanna put solar panels, we can't do all these trees. Um, so we can only plant fifteen units, and you say, well, that's fine, do fifteen units, put up your solar panels, pay us for the other fifteen units worth of trees.
Okay. Well, I, I guess at some point, we have to just sort of give this a try and see, and if it becomes really problematic, and we're gonna hear from our code officer pretty quickly, and from the planning board pretty quickly. Um, we might have to make modifications, but I really think it's important, especially given some of the, uh, the possible development that's gonna be occurring in our village, that now is the time to do this. We learned our lesson with Maguire, frankly. And we didn't have something in place, although he, it was, I believe, Mr. Snyder, that, who suggested a tree bank, and we didn't have one, so I would like to have one, um. And I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know enough about this, I don't know if this needs to have I, I keep thinking we have such resources here at Cornell, is there anybody that we should be, Pat Simon, anybody that we should be passing this by, just as kind of, I don't know, from the Cornell Extension, I, or something?
Uh, I, I haven't even looked into that, I can look into that, cause alls I've been doing is just looking at what other municipalities do here, and that's all.
Yeah.
Larger towns, and then cities, and everyone is different, there is nothing standard about them, so I cherry pick from each and every one of them.
Right.
Parts that I like and don't like, and this seven pages is by far the shortest out of any of them, um, cause they're usually quite lengthy, but they all have tree boards. Um, and they have the resources you know, to really support this, whereas I'm trying to keep this simple, and it's just so difficult, every time I get all these questions, and then I think, yeah, you know, I didn't think of that, and someone could do this, and someone could do that. And then, I, I think that, that list goes on infinitely, cause it's not like putting in a sidewalk and saying, well, this has to be a base, this has to be the width of the sidewalk, and this is how you have to maintain it, and you have three different materials that you can build sidewalk out of. You know, I have an infinite number of trees, and an infinite, you know, uh, number of ways that you can plant them. And so, just trying to think of everything is, is uh, difficult, and I'm always conscious of the fact that you know, thing, this may have to be changed down the track. Um, but as I said, I'm trying to keep it general and have guidelines, so the planning board does have leeway, developers have leeway for how they wanna plant. The planning board has leeway as to how they'll allow things to be planted, but at the end of the day, if they can't plant the trees, they can always plant to the tree bank.
Mike Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
You're gonna get involved with this, do you, have we built in enough, um, things where basically, you're not gonna have to get involved with the it's gonna be up to the I, the report from this, um, ISA A certified arborist to submit reports? Um, and, and that for enforcement and for the planning board to review, it's gonna be like existing trees, proposed trees, blah, blah. I mean, have, is there enough in here to make this reasonably feasible to get us started?
Oh, to, to get you started and, and almost to the end, yeah, there's, there's, there's plenty in here, but as we do with every you know, every law, or every proposed law, you're gonna end up having to tweak it somewhere, once it gets, you know, incorporated, and say, you know, it gets you know, it gets used, and, okay, maybe we have to do this, maybe we have to do this, but I was also thinking, Simon, and I don't wanna step on your toes or anything, but uh, as you can relate to, it, it, this, this time of year for us to go out and look for sheds, um, if you don't mind me taking, I can probably take a photo of about an acre of, of land when I'm walking out in the woods, and kinda determine what the units are for that, take some pictures, give you some idea what the density is, and I mean, it's, it's not gonna be an exact science, but it's gonna give you an idea. I can try to do that for, you know, before another meeting or so. I mean.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm good with that, I mean, I encourage everyone to sort of go out and have a look at some of the parcels around here, and have a guesstimate as to, you know, how many trees they have, and, um, cause that's what I've been trying to do, and you know, hearing about other areas that are potentially being developed, and what they have now, and what they don't, I mean, I I'll just say, you know, I'm looking at the, the, the car dealerships down there, and the, the Chevy dealership, I mean, I think they have two or three street trees out there, and not much else, I, I would, I would like to see more. Um.
Well, well, Simon, you know where the camp is, you can come over, and we can go out and plot out a acre of land, and kinda figure it out if you want to.
Well, you could go up to Uptown Road, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, but to answer your question, Lacy, yeah, I mean, this is, this is way more than we've started before, on uh, uh, doing local laws, I mean, this is, Simon's done a great job with this.
And, and.
I'm happy to walk around with you, Mike, but I don't know how many trees we count.
We, uh, we'd, we'd get distracted anyway.
Well, yeah.
So, what is, so the next, so at some point we, i- as a board, we feel, okay, we'd like to pass this along pass this along to the Board of Trustees with the recommendation that it become a local law, is that the next step, or do we wanna come up?
Uh, I, I think we need to try to get it into some, I've worked with Simon, if you wanted to, to try to get into some form that would fit into local law, to try to, to try to keep our laws consistent, we try to keep the same type of format on there. Um.
Actually, I tried to do that, I had trouble.
You can always work together on that, Simon, if you want to, or I can come up with something and get it to you, and, and then, once we once you take a look at it, once the planning board takes a look at it, and said, yeah, this looks pretty good, and then we send it over to Natalie, and she can cut it up pretty good, and and, uh, we just keep fine tuning it till we get it to the trustees.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I figured we're kind of at now, we just, uh, keep fine tuning it. Natalie had a lot of good comments that she sent this afternoon. Um, and I have gone through those, Natalie, I, I'll have to make some changes, I gotta clear a few things up there. Uh.
Or, and like how Lisa was saying, anything that someone could pick apart, to why they don't have to comply, or they do comply, but you don't think they comply, things like that.
Yeah, and some of, you know, some of your points, you were just highlighting a bit of ambiguity there, too. Um, and I, and I had that, you made one good point there about, um, how we set the fee for the, for trees in the tree bank. Um, and I'll say that would be set by the DPW, and it could be done by a third party, and so they'd have to pay for that, but then how, if we don't plant the trees, how does that work for paying into those climate change initiatives? Because we're not gonna plant a tree, and we're not contracting a third party to come in and do that, so I've gotta unless somebody else, or you have a suggestion, if I could reword that.
Was that we would just kind of ask John, theoretically, what would it cost to plant five trees? He would give us a number, and we just request that money and put it into the tree bank. And so that's why the whole third party eh, thing kind of threw me.
Okay, so maybe I should just change it to set by the DPW at market rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, because the minute you start getting outside things, then we, we have, at the village, we can make these decisions fairly quickly, but to wait on someone else could really slow us down.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking at the time when I wrote that, that, yeah, sure, sure, John could tell me it would cost two hundred bucks to plant a tree, but if you didn't have time and had to hire someone else, and ends up costing five hundred, so, but I would just I, I'm, I'll make sure that, you know, he knows that he doesn't have to plant these things, it'll just be what he feels is the right to get someone in to come and plant a tree.
Yeah, I didn't think it was instantaneous planting somewhere else.
Right.
Saving up for a time where we thought we had time and a space to use it.
Yep.
But, and I, okay, so how soon do we think we can do this? Because speaking of, of the Chevy dealership, they're starting to be interested in moving forward, and so we have that, and may, maybe have some other stuff, I'd really like to get this going.
Uh, I mean, I can make all these changes that everyone sent, you know, by the end of the week, uh, and then just have out a, another clean copy, but then it will just be tweaks, as Mike said, like, how do we set this tree unit value, and, um, what's, you know, eh, what's a twelve inch tree worth, what's a twenty-four inch tree worth? Uh, because I was just going off of what other municipalities did, and setting my own numbers there, they didn't, n- no one matched up what everyone was doing, you know, a twelve inch wasn't always worth you know, two units, some had that was worth one and a half, some one, some were three. Some broke it down, every two inches was worth a different value, and it was, they had huge tables. Um, and then others, you know, they were fine with a replacement tree, could be a one inch caliper, some wanted two and a half inch calipers. I just, I just chose the two, because I I'm planting a lot of trees, and I took, he'd buy two inch trees, cause I know that they're gonna, they're pretty healthy, and they're gonna grow well, so I just arbitrarily picked two. But all of those things can be tweaked.
I don't, I don't think any of us are probably in a position to tweak those, Simon, after all you've done. But I, I will leave that up to others to make that decision. Okay, that would be great, so do we think, um, we can wrap this up next time? Yeah, no?
I'll leave that to everyone else, I just want people to be comfortable um, with what I'm proposing, and, and I know Ronnie had a comment, and, and Natalie, uh, backed him up on it um, in the document, that I'm not counting existing trees of four inches and less as having any uh, value, um, and the reasoning for that, and I can change this, um, the reasoning for is if you have a site that has a tree three inches in diameter, chances are, that probably wasn't recently planted, it's been there for quite a while, and if it's only three inches in diameter, it's just never really grown, it might be diseased, incompatible with the site. Um, so I just don't wanna include it as having any value. It could also be buckthorn, or sumac, or something that we don't really want. And we could put, eh, we could have a separate appendix saying, these are all the trees that we don't want, and we're not gonna count as having value. But that would be a huge document, and I'm sure we'll miss a bunch of things that, oh, that tree, never thought of that tree. So this way, it's kind of just a catchall, that anything under four inches doesn't count.
Okay.
That's subject to change though, too, but that was, that was my reasoning there.
All right, great, well done, carry on, but what a nice job, Simon, golly. Thank you so much, cause this is really important.
Thank you, yeah, I'm always conscious when I'm doing it, that it's, I'm just thinking of holes everywhere, it's, it's hard to catch everything in this.
Uh, well, it, it's, we don't have anything, so I think it's pretty remarkable. I think it will serve us well, and we'll like, we'll, we'll modify it as necessary as we go along, Mike?
So, so what do you wanna, what do you wanna do with this? So you want, Simon, you wanna make any of the changes that have been sent to you, and then you want me to start taking a crack at formatting this into a, an actual proposed law?
I, I'm good with that, I mean, I can get all those proposed changes done, as I said, you know, by the weekend, um, and if everyone is comfortable at that point, you know, getting the wording right, and then just continuing to tweak it after that.
So you'll send, you'll send all of us to, um, the final corrected version, but, and then Mike will work on formatting it into our sort of code book law format? Cause we don't have, we don't have all the changes that were proposed, right, at this point?
No, they're all just, they're just comments, I've, I've gotta make all those changes.
Yeah, okay, good, all right, so once we see that, of course, you know, you can go on with that sort of thing forever, but at some point, we, I think we're ready to say, let's just get it in, and then if we see anything egregious, obviously, we'll have to change that, but I don't think so, it's been through quite a number of reviews at this point, it seems like we're really closing in on the endpoint, to me, anyway. But, add any, okay, so Simon, you'll get that off to Mike, probably early next week?
Yep.
And to us as well, just so that we know.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is trustee report, I think, Mike Baker, you're ready to give us your report?
That was me, as much of it as I can, and I'll, I'll ask, uh, Mike or Simon, or maybe Ronnie to finish it, because my power and internet went out, it was the night of the storm, and then my power came back on, but my internet not so much, so um, there was a discussion about the local lighting law, I think Ronnie opened a public hearing for it, um. And this is something, this is kind of interesting to me, but they talked about the temperature of the light, whether, right, whether it's a little more white or more yellow, so they talked about the, um temperature of the light, um, and then kind of what we have in the village, and then they did the, um, the seeker for it. The kinda, at least while I was there, the biggest part of the discussion was about the, um, the TCAT bus stop there by Gaslight Villages. Um, so TCAT was there, they did give a presentation on it, um, there was some, you know, some sort of discussion about the um, the pad, cause it would be on the other side of the road from where the actual apartments are, so there's some discussion about the, the pad, or retaining wall, the actual shelter would be, that would be there. There were quite a few, um, comments and questions about, um, kind of safety, and different routes and different options, John Courtney was there, he brought up some things. Um, so, a decision wasn't made there about the bus stop, um, but there, there was quite a bit of information about that, and I, I know it's also, Mike and I actually talked about this, it's been in the news recently, so um, TCAT's kind of planned for that area, so um, they talked about, um, after that, the, um, the mall, and, um, some of the, uh, like the land transfer, and the easements, and things like that, for the shops at Etham Mall. And I think Ronnie, I think those are all set, right, Natalie, those are all set, Ronnie signed them, so that, that piece of it's done, so, yay! Long time, long time in the making, so that's great. Um, and then I think that the discussion moved on to the budget, but that's when my internet dropped out, and I got kicked off Zoom, and the cell phone signal in my house sucks. Incidentally, I will also share with this, Tompkins County has a study out for cell signal in the various areas that you live. And if you like to go it out, you can go and say, here's where I live, here's the wireless carrier that I have, here's how my signal is, it's like, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, thumb sideways, so I'm not the only one that think it sucks here, if you go like a hundred yards up the road from my house, it's great, but here it stinks, so without wifi.
We, well, we're downhill, and we have the same problem, yeah, we're downhill, cause closer you get to the lake, the worse it gets.
Um, but so, after, after the discussion at the Etham Mall, I know there was a discussion about the budget, but I didn't know if Mike, or Ronnie, or Simon, if you can fill in the blank there on that last piece, I would appreciate it. Send all complaints to the complaint department at, uh, we'll say time order, spectrum, whatever you wanna call them. Or Verizon, take your pick, I don't care, send all complaints everywhere.
Just not you.
Biggest part of the budget you missed is that the planning board is working for free next year, I think.
That's weird, I heard it was like quadruple the, uh, the salary, it's weird. Must be that crappy internet signal.
Right, yeah. I wouldn't trust anything you hear on the internet.
That's right.
On Zoom either.
Yeah. I looked it up on Wikipedia. Wikipedia never lies, right? Uh-oh.
Oh, of course not.
So was there.
That's the first place I go to, by the way.
Was there.
The uh, we, we, we had a discussion, uh, we basically set a public hearing for that proposed local law, A, which is the uh, lighting law. So that will be at our next evening meeting. And um, we considered the recreational partnership agreement. We, we uh, voted to go ahead and sign that agreement. It's a five-year agreement. Uh, just to continue our, our uh, participation in that partnership. Uh, then we just basically quickly went through our, our starting point for the budget discussions. And uh, to see if there were any im- immediate impressions or questions. Uh, people were pretty happy with what was there. There were a few holes that would be filled. And we will continue that discussion that Thursday's uh, trustees and staff meeting, uh, just to kind of fill those and start getting ready for a uh, a draft final budget that we can uh, offer for a public hearing soon. So uh, the next Thursday's meeting will be the really meaty part of, of the discussion. Uh, we just kind of wanted to get a, the first discussion is basically setting a best, a baseline. Then we start uh, really discussing it at our next meeting. And uh, that's about it.
So regarding this recommendation for the Uptoni, do you need that by Thursday? Or is that for your other, for your March twenty-one meeting?
Uh, we don't need it for Thursday. And there, there's no immediate need for a, a, a quick recommendation from you. Uh, when you get it to us, we will schedule it for the subsequent meeting after that. So don't rush. Take your time.
For March twenty-first. It's okay. Okay, good.
Yeah, that's fine. That will be fine.
Okay, just wanted to know whether you did too. Okay. All right, so we have the trustee report. Um, I wanted to let everyone know on the planning board because I'm not sure the word has totally gotten out, but um, Susan, who is with us this evening, has um, thrown her hat in the ring to become a village trustee. So um, I would ask all of you to remind yourselves, put it on your calendar, April the twenty-sixth is election day and will be look, she will be probably looking for your support. We also have another candidate, um, Jeff Dobbin, who uh, works at CFCU. Many people in the village know Jeff, apparently, from what I've heard. So we are really lucky because it was kind of scary. Um, I don't know. Certainly, the, the future of the village could be greatly jeopardized without a full trustee board. So um, thank you, Susan. Um, we're disappointed, but uh, the higher callings must be met. So thank you for running. I, I really appreciate it. And let's see, is every, oh, the other thing that I hadn't realized until recently, and I mentioned it to Mike Baker, um, he didn't know either is that all of our meetings are now on YouTube on the village website. So if you want to get embarrassed and see yourself on, on video.
I totally watched one. I was the one viewer that watched it when I wasn't here that one time. I was one viewer and that was me.
Just proof, just proof that Mike Baker didn't know that they were on YouTube.
That's right.
There you go.
Um, but it is, it's somewhat embarrassing and we do have to remember that we're being recorded, I guess. Because sometimes we do get a little carried away, but um, it just shows you how nice it is to be on a board and have worked together, I think. But it, it really is, it's nice. I think if you are unable to come to a meeting to, to go back and see that. I used to do that many years ago when we were recording up at the old office. If I went on vacation, I would come back and look at the video and it really does keep you in, you know, you don't miss it because it's not the same as reading the minutes, you know? Um, so.
Question, curiosity. I mean, I know, look, but on the YouTube, does it show tiles? You know, the tiles like we see on Zoom.
Yeah, it shows, it shows exactly what you're seeing here. So if somebody starts screen sharing, yeah, that's exactly what you say.
Yeah. I hope that got on Monica.
Yep.
They all look like an episode of The Brady Bunch, you know, every Zoom video everywhere. It looks like The Brady Bunch or uh, Hollywood Squares, so. There's not much you can do about that.
Yeah, you know, I think they do these studies about, well, I think it was especially with the COVID, how many times you touch your face in a minute or something, or you know, your ears or you fuss with your hair and it's geez, just watch a video. It's pretty, like I said, it's a little embarrassing, but at any rate. Um, so I am assuming that going forward, the wonderful Zoom party is over and that we're going to have to start meeting live? No?
Oh, wait, wait. I'm, I'm sorry. We, yes, at some point, there, there is a, there is a a rumor from Albany that it will be extended at least one more month. Because of some of the limitations related to healthcare workers and, and medical facilities. But that's, that's not certain. But at some point, we will have to meet live. Uh, the village will continue to record. We have our hybrid meeting uh, that's being uh, uh, finalized now, so what you, what we will have to do is the, we will have to have a quorum live at that point so that you can actually vote. If someone has to join from out of town, that's a board member, they can participate in the discussion. Once the executive order is, is lifted, they cannot vote. That's, that's the difference. So you can still participate, but if you're not in the room at that point, you cannot vote.
Okay.
And don't worry, don't worry, Mike. I stopped by the, the um, the hall the other day on Saturday or Sunday, I guess, and uh, I know how the, I know how the system works now, so. I can help you out. I can help you out when we're back in person.
Yeah.
But so oh yeah, so we don't need to have our computers there?
No, we will have a dedicated computer, a dedicated laptop. Sorry, Kat's interested. We, we will have a, we will have a dedicated laptop for meetings. And uh, that's the participant view for the conference room.
Okay.
So we're, obviously, it's, it's a it's a system and when you're first using systems, things break or don't work as expected. So we will have some, some uh, ramping up time, but we've discovered a way that we can use a, 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 an exterior camera also connected to that same laptop that can point at the uh, in-person podium for public speakers uh, or uh, or visitors. So that's the we, we tested that with a laptop and it worked fine. Uh, I'd next thing, we're get, we're purchasing an ex the laptop for the computer, uh, that's the video system and an external camera and tripod, so we can officially test that. But uh, I think it'll work out pretty good. And we can, therefore, we can record, so people will have a better, uh, it's a little easier for people to uh, create minutes from uh, the recordings rather than trying to take notes during the meeting. Uh, so we will continue to do that. We'll just consider it hybrid, but quarums will have to be live in the room.
Okay, well.
At future, sorry Lisa, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, Simon.
So at future planning board meetings and Ronnie, if I needed to be there, um, so, so Monica could, would have to be at the meeting, but I could still just do it from here because I'd have to be home with the kids.
Yeah.
That's right, because you're not a voting member. You could do, you could just do it remotely. So any of the liaison work from the uh, planning board into the board of trustees could also join remotely. They don't have to be in the room. It can be, but they don't have to.
That would be handy. Oh, see, you know, of all of the things, this really has been kind of nice that what's evolved from this whole Zoom thing because it, this whole, it has just totally changed the minutes for, but you know, it used to be so arduous and it still is for Mike, but I will tell you that the review is just amazing because they're so accurate and good that it, and it's, it's just made a huge difference. And so I'm really grateful that that's going to continue. All right. Well, we'll probably have a few little, maybe we do a dry run. I mean, it's a technology that first timeout is always a little interesting and we, I don't know, do, I guess we can't meet as a board to do it, but I don't know, do our, do you plan to do a dry run of some sort or?
Certainly, we certainly can do that. I think once all the components are together, we can, we can plan on uh, uh, people who, like, people who would be uh, the hosts of the meeting, say chairs be, be physically in the room.
Yeah.
Uh, as long as we didn't have a quorum of any of our boards
Right.
In that room at the same time.
Two, two of us.
And then everyone else that was interested could join remotely and then that way we could do a little test, you know, how does it, how does it look to the remote people? Uh, and what are the people in the room seeing from the system, the video system? Because we'll be able to display this panel up on the monitors within the room. And just to kind of see how all the components work. We tested it ourselves, but you never know until you actually go live. That's, that's when.
No, I think it would be really helpful to do a dry run, I think.
Yeah, we'll schedule something as soon as all the pieces are together.
Okay, great. So our next meeting is March the twenty-ninth. And I wanted to check that I'm going to have my Monica, Jim and Mike. Yes, Monica, yes, Jim?
Yep.
Maybe.
Say again?
I said, maybe not. I think I'm supposed to have my um, cataracts on that day.
Oh, I guess.
Good luck, good luck, Jim.
Thank you. Have you done it?
I've done both eyes. And uh, it's, it's, it's remarkable.
It's, it's really not, the first one's the scariest, that's all. And then you say, oh, okay. But that's right. Okay, so you'll keep me posted, Jim?
Yeah, I will. I wasn't going to say it publicly, but since you asked, I would give an honest answer of, I'm not sure.
Yes, right. Okay, so we will not expect you. Um, yeah, Patrick couldn't be with us tonight because he is, is not well. And he's being tested for COVID, as a matter of fact, but it may be the flu. And I said, just don't even come, you know, well, not quite. I'm not even remotely, please, you know, just don't need that. So um, let's hope it isn't COVID. Okay, I, unless, does anybody have anything else? Mike? Tell us a little bit about, so the mall is wrapped up. Is that true? They have their final plat and everything?
Yep, they have.
Also.
That has been submitted.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, there is rumor that the CUGO Medical has closed on a couple of pieces of the, a couple parcels.
Good.
Um, I.
The, I, this is Ronnie. I got an, an invitation from CUGO Medical to attend an announcement tomorrow at the mall, so I suspect it's beyond closing. They're ready to, to rush forward.
More than a rumor then, huh? Okay.
Yep, and I think it's a done deal.
I, I had been contacted um, by a couple of representatives from the, uh, well, actually from whole engineering um, about possible uh, special permit coming to you to uh, uh, to redo the Bonton and Sears. Um, I've seen, I guess, a preliminary plan for it. Um, it's like a bunch of offices at this point. Uh, there'll be some examination rooms, so I don't know the full extent of it. I'm, I'm waiting. You know, I gave them, you know, I, I told them we wanted to, I need everything in the end of this week so we can be in by the twenty-ninth. They sounded like they were uh, very anxious to do that. Uh, hopefully they are. Um, the other, as you had mentioned, Lisa, is uh, um, if you remember when McGuire Nissan went up, they had mentioned that sometime in the near future, they would be renovating the Chevy, uh Chevrolet dealership. Uh, I'm waiting to get some information from Josh Snyder on whether that uh, he's actually needs to be a special permit or not. Um, and I think that's, you, you touched on hybrid meetings. And I guess finally, I just wanted to say hi to Brett because I hadn't hadn't heard from him all night. How you doing, Brett? That's all.
Could I just ask, you know, when they okay, so if CUGO Medical comes, they pu- purchase their parcel. They own the parking lot that goes with their parcel, right?
Yes.
So I have always thought it would be nice to have some trees and islands out in those parking lots. Is that something we can ask for? Simon, hurry up and get that property thing up. I mean, is that something that eh, we can ask for?
Sure. You're part of a special permit, huh? You can ask.
Yeah, we could, we could.
I like the shirt. You, you can ask for whatever you want.
Can ask for a Ferris wheel out there too, if you want, but but no, I, I think you can, Lisa. I think you can, you can.
Well, you know, you'd miss a hundred percent of the shots you don't take, right? Isn't that what my daughter always learned in hockey? Wayne Gretzky or somebody, I don't know. And is that Wayne even his first name? Um, but no harm in asking. And I would think that they would want that. Okay, just was wondering. Well, that's exciting though. And then you, I, I think, Mike, you also was mentioned that the Drug and Alcohol Council is starting to move forward.
Yep, both um, Aldi and the uh, Alcohol and Drug Council, they both had their uh, permits now and they're moving forward. Um, there's been a lot of activity on Aldi. Uh, they're actually worked on the facade a little bit today. Um, and I should be, I think, the seventeenth, no, the eighteenth, they uh, I'm making a walkthrough with the Alcohol and Drug Council. Um, just to give me kind of a preliminary, uh, this is what, this is how it's going to look here, the interior walls and that kind of um, you know, kind of going over the plans a little bit. And uh, because I asked them, I said, look, I don't want you to get too far ahead here. I mean, there's projects that sometime they start going crazy and Brett knows about this. Projects start going crazy and then they forget to call you or, or you only see this part, you want to see this part. So I told them they're going to get a uh, they're going to get a weekly visit.
Oh, I think that will save you a headache in the long run, and them too.
Get in there and get some pictures done and documented and that kind of stuff.
And dare I ask about?
No, nothing.
I saw people there today. Lansing Meadows, obviously, guys, what else? I saw people sort of standing around in front of one of the units. I don't know, but you, there's, you haven't heard anything?
No.
Okay.
Oh, we did, um, uh, uh, sorry, there's one other thing. We did uh, um, Brett and John and myself and the representatives from the beers, we did meet uh, this past week and it was a pretty good meeting. Uh, they went through some of the uh, you know, where the sewer was going to run and uh, I think Brett sent them over some information as far as a uh, cross-section of a typical uh, uh, road and sidewalk. Um, you know, we went over some of the trails and some of the water. It was a good, it was a good meeting. We only had about an hour, but it was a good meeting. Got a lot of things done.
Brent is nodding. Thank heavens. We both agree on that.
Yeah. Yeah, they they took into account almost all of the little nitpicky things about corners and edges and infringements on wetlands and pretty much, if they hadn't already fixed it, they acknowledged that, you know, it still needed to be that, you know, they, they were willing to clean things up. And I I think we're we're going to get there.
I'm glad. I'm, I think, I, I had spoken to Mike and he said it was a good meeting. I said, well, I'm glad that we seem to have turned the corner on moving forward nicely.
There's still going to be some decisions the planning board needs to make, whether, you know, with the sidewalks, you know, whether it's going to be escrow, whether they're going to be installed. Uh, John Courtney's looking into whether that southern dead end needed to be put in at this point, the one that, the, the road that would go, I guess, Millcrop Extension that would go to the Lansing Trails Three.
Right.
Um, and there's, you know, there's just a couple, there's some other things that the, the planning board is going to have to decide on. There, there's some uh, setback relief, that type of stuff.
Well, I think some of that, part of it is part of the phase two of the project, isn't it? That area?
I think most of, in general, and you think so, Brett, most of it is in that loop road area type.
Yeah, and that's the. We would want to wait until they start that or so, I, yeah, okay, so we, we should all be thinking about that kind of thing. Alright, good. Um, Jim?
Yeah, is it, um, premature to ask what Cugget Medical Center has in mind for the. Property they've required, or do we need, need to wait until the public announcement tomorrow?
I, I, I don't know, Jim, I, I saw, like I said, I saw a preliminary, uh, layout and it looked to me like, uh, there was some. It looked more like a clinic area, it looked more like a, to, to me, it looked kind of like, um. Emergency care type thing, where it also had, uh, patient rooms and that type of stuff to. It's, it's bigger than emergency care, I don't mean to make it sound like it's small, because it's that Bon Ton's a large, um, that's a large plot.
Maybe they're moving the urgent care center down there.
I don't think so, they probably don't. And it's an allowed use with a special permit?
Yep.
We're gonna find out, so Ronnie will find out tomorrow, or I suppose. We will find out soon enough, but I think that's great, um, it's nice, I'm glad that it's gone past the rumor stage. They think it could make a huge difference for the mall, okay, it is. You know what time it is, you know what I'm looking for, is anybody? Okay, that was Mike Baker to Jim McCauley at eight fifty-three, all those in favor, aye?
Alright.
Alright, good night, everybody.